Morning, everyone. It's time to start the July 15th agenda. We'll start that. We've got a call to order, and we'd like to pull up Gary and Marcella Jenkins for our opening prayer and pledges.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Everyone here, we ask you to join with us as we pray for our community. Precious Father in heaven, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you to say thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you've done, and we ask you to endow our city council with wisdom and knowledge to be able to conduct the business of the city in a way that will glorify you. We thank you for our first responders, our firefighters and police officers, and all of those that labor to keep us safe and to help us during times of emergencies such as the recent deadly flood that hit Texas. We pray for the people of San Angelo that you will help them to recover now that we have that federal disaster declaration and where people can come and get help. We pray for the families in Kerrville who have lost loved ones and those that are still missing. We pray, God, that you hear our prayer, and we pray, Father, in Jesus' name, that you help us to be a better community through all of this, because when San Angelo was at its worst, the people of this city came together and demonstrated our best. So we were so grateful for this community, and we thank you for Tom Green County Judge Lane Carter, Congressman August Fluger, and all of those that were important and helped us to get the declaration so that the people can get the help that they need in this city. So, Father, bless each and every one that's here. Have your will and your way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[inaudible]
Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, and will address all comments to the dais, begin by stating your name and address or single-member district number, and limit your remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, do we have any public comment?
Jamal Schumpert.
Jamal.
Jamal Schumpert, 2817 North Urban Street, San Angelo, Texas. Today, City Council, I would like to talk to you guys about some relief efforts on the North Side Recreation Center. The reason I'm a little upset about it is because I was looking into possibly leasing that building myself with some other investors until this happened. After this flood, I can't, I can't, I can't use those people's money to try to fix that up, knowing that you guys didn't even take care of it in the beginning. We were willing to put in the AC units needed for that place so that we could start an after-school basketball program for these kids in the north side. I saw what Black Shirt Heights was doing. I wanted to magnify that. So what I'm trying to tell you is, when we talk about taking care of our assets, I think our assets need to be taken care of equally. Putting all that concrete out there on Southwest by McDonald's could have been better used in many other areas. We had a boring company come in. I think we should have bored from that North Side Recreation detention area onto the other detention area where you had the big tower. I think it's an electric tower with radio signals coming out of it. I'm not sure. It could have been some other alternative other than just sinking the North Side Recreation Center. Beyond that, some of these people may not get the help they need. I know that we have about $12 million in economic development and $12 million in the ballot side, both unassigned, that we could use towards helping these people, just in case FEMA doesn't help or even the private donations come short. And then when it comes to economic development, I went to a meeting. I looked at what they were doing. Fifty meetings in a year? That's about once a week. It seems like it's going to be a lot of getting together, hosting events and partying, overbringing jobs in San Angelo. I honestly believe the best way to bring jobs to a town like this in our oasis is to have your people be the attraction. The Economic Development Corporation needs to be a skills factory in which we hire professionals to teach us skills for free. No other town is doing that. That way, when investors come look at your town, they're not looking for you to set up an aviation mechanic school so that you can support certain operations of their division. They'll be looking at your town as a whole like, hey, we got mechatronic engineers here. We got civil engineers here. We got all types of people and skills from the intermediate and beginning level to the top. I think we need to look at refocusing our efforts and maybe change from that traditional way of thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal. Heather, next.
One staff comment from Patrick Ferrerick.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Just wanted to give each of y'all a quick update on what operations is doing kind of in the aftermath of the flood. Right now, wanted to address trash service. Trash service for the majority of town is back in its normal rotation, so picking up normal household trash in the brown bins, recycling in the green bins, and then bulk collection. That's all happening in the bulk of town that wasn't necessarily directly affected by the floods. In the most impacted area, we are going through and still collecting bag trash. We have some assistance from staff and firefighters going through and picking up bag trash, trying to get that going. We have a contracted debris management company that's going to be coming in on the 21st, next Monday, and they're going to start picking up the bulk of the debris from the flood in the impacted areas. So everything in the inundation area is going to be, start being collected on the 21st by that company. We'll be moving through several sections of town, and we'll get that messaging out as we get it. We're working with that company this week. They're going to be in town really giving us an assessment and a game plan on how they're going to move through. So we'll be hitting multiple areas at one time, so it's not just a slow method moving through. This is what this company does. It's all they do, so they're pros at it. So we're completely confident that we'll move through this in the most expeditious way possible. Additionally, we've been getting a lot of calls about mosquitoes. Want to let everybody know that we are spraying for mosquitoes. We have all of our mosquito rigs out spraying throughout the entire town, but in the most affected area where people are outside almost constantly all day, still moving and working out there, we're spraying that entire area, as well as providing dunks in our standing water areas. These little rains aren't going to help. There's going to be continual mosquito problems coming in just because of those low-lying areas. It's perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. So just know, as a public, we're aware of that. We're doing what we can with what we have to relieve some of that, but anything that they can do in their backyards, if they're dumping water bowls, keeping their grass mowed, stuff like that, that'll help with the mosquito problem holistically. So just wanted to give that quick update to you guys and say that we are on it, and if you got any questions, please reach out to operations, and we'll get y'all helped out.
Patrick, a couple things. Number one, the most important probably, that we all have gotten phone calls. Thank you for the mosquito update. All right, you must get a call from all of our wives and people, but it's something that's been brought up. Number two, as we're removing trash, I'm getting calls from constituents. They are running out of room, all right? And I think I pass this on to you and Shane both. Could you maybe talk about how they're going to prioritize their pickup when we start next week?
So there's obviously areas of town that were harder hit than most. That lower section of Pulliam, where we had the really swift water, that's going to be a primary area of focus for those individuals. And then along 37th Street, where all that water came through on the north side, that's going to be the most affected area on the north side. So we're going to try to focus on that street, get that street cleared. And then up in Green Acres has a whole lot of debris in that place as well. Green Acres is a little bit better because they have a little more room to spread out. In these more closely knit neighborhoods, I do understand that it is tight. All we ask is do the best you can with what you have right now. Get it as close to the curb as possible. Please keep it out of the street, though, because we do still have to maintain that thoroughfare for vehicles. Like I said, hopefully Monday we'll be coming through and we'll be removing all of that. We do plan on making two, maybe three cycles, but we want as much out on the street as possible and are on the curb line as possible for this first go-around. So please just keep pushing it back and use all the space that you can. We understand it's tight, but it is what it is unfortunately, and we'll get through it as fast as we can.
We're just getting people that are calling and they're saying, we don't understand. But the point of it is, we want to get as much of the muck and gut that's going on now to get all of their debris to the curb.
Yes.
A lot of that's going on, but everything starts Monday, so I would encourage all the citizens to have everything, as much as you can have, as far as you can go by Sunday evening at the latest, because the crews start on Monday.
Right. And the biggest thing that's going to help us out on that is if you can truly sort out your stuff as best you can, it doesn't have to be a definitive line in between items, but please keep your CND, your construction debris, your vegetation, your electronics, keep all that separated as best you can so that the company that's collecting it has to be sorted in that manner for them to pick it up. Otherwise, they're going to bypass it. We've got to come back, sort it, and then they'll circle back around. So if we're going to be doing this in the most expeditious manner, if we can have all of that sorted out, that'll relieve the stuff in front of your home the fastest.
Okay. Another question. Will they be working regular hours?
They'll be working seven. I don't know what time, but as long as they possibly can. I mean, they're here to work, so it's not going to, they're not shutting down at five o'clock, I can tell you that. So I think our noise ordinance lets them start at seven o'clock, so they'll be on the street by seven, and then we'll be working at least probably till dark with this company.
Okay, cool. Patrick, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Heather, any remaining public comment? I would like to make a couple statements. First things first, I'd like to recognize Candy Pool, and she has brought Emma Vasquez and Ethan Vasquez from Troop 42 and Troop 1. Ethan, Evan, would y'all stand up, please? Awesome. Thank y'all for coming to City Council. I know this must have been a dream of y'all's for years to come here, and we're glad you're here. Thanks for coming. Y'all need recognition. Thank y'all. With that, I'll just, one final statement. The input from the local community and staff and volunteer groups has just been outstanding. I can't go any further than that. I just want to say, I would take this team versus anybody. Y'all have been exemplary. All right, thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. We'll move into the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull? Start with you, Ms. Mary.
Yes, sir.
Karen?
Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Harry?
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Hebert?
Yes, sir.
All right. With that, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? All right. With that, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes, 7-0. With that, we'll move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellantants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A, discuss and consider adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $41.6 million of City of San Angelo, Texas general obligation bonds, taxable Series 2025, for the purpose of improving the city's Coliseum located on the San Angelo fairgrounds as approved by the voters at the bond election held within the city on May 3, 2025, levying an annual ad of alarm tax and providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, approving an official statement, a bond purchase agreement, and a paying agent registrar agreement, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Presentation made by Finance Director Tina Dersky and Specialized Public Finance, Inc. Management Director Vince Viall. Tina, you're on.
Thank you. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. We did go out for sale on these bonds yesterday. It was a negotiated sale, and I have Vince Viall from Specialized Public Finance here to kind of explain what that was and how that worked yesterday and what the results were. Unless you have any other questions for me first, I will have him come up and give you the spiel.
Let's just bring old Vince up.
Morning, Mayor. Council members, for the record, my name is Vince Viall. I'm Specialized Public Finance. We're the city's financial advisor. My associate, Paul Jason, is handing out some information related to the bond sale that we conducted yesterday. I want to walk the council through this.
Thanks, sir.
And hopefully answer any questions you may have about the transaction. As Tina stated, we were in the marketplace yesterday negotiating the transaction for the $41 million general obligation bonds with the underwriters, Raymond James and Samco Capital Markets. This is obviously going to be from the election that was approved by the voters for the Coliseum improvements. Part of the process that we do on any kind of a bond issuance is we try to obtain a bond rating from nationally recognized rating agencies such as Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch Rating Services for the city for the issuer. In this case, we did that. S&amp;P came back and confirmed the existing double-A rating for the City of San Angelo, and Fitch also confirmed their double-A-plus rating for the City of San Angelo. So that was part of the process that we went through on this negotiated sale. The interest rate that we were able to come to agreement with on the underwriters for the transaction is 5.418 percent, so that will be the effective interest rate on the taxable issue that we're looking at. If the council approves this ordinance authorizing the issuance this morning of the bonds, that will set us up for a closing on August 14th. That will be the date that the city receives the funds. Any questions so far?
Vince, did you see any problems with the rate we got compared to the market?
Not at all. I was very pleased with the interest rate that we got. We were in the marketplace, like I said, yesterday, and actually, the 10-year Treasury was starting to move away from us a little bit, but the underwriter stepped up and got under the bonds, so I was very happy to see the rate that we got.
Cool. Thank you.
Page two is a debt service schedule that illustrates the payments that City of San Angelo will make on the general obligation bonds. It is a 20-year term. There is a 10-year call feature with what we also have. Earlier than that, a make-whole call, so we have flexibility if we want to pay this off early, if the city so desires. On page three, you might find of interest, these are the orders that came in from the marketplace to the underwriters. You can see there that we had a lot of local participation from commercial banks, and also something very unique down in the bottom on the yellow, you'll see retail accounts in Texas. We had a lot of participation from local investors on this. That is somewhat uncommon to see local investors participate in municipal underwritings or bonds of this nature. So I was real happy to see retail accounts locally step up and take down about $415,000 of this transaction. Nationally, we had more than that, but you can look and see what financial institutions stepped up and bought some of these bonds from the underwriters, and that really helped our sale quite a bit. On page four is the timeline for the transaction. We've already been through the majority of the steps toward the bottom of the timeline. Obviously, July 15th, we're considering the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the GO bonds, and again, if that's approved by the council, that will set us up for a closing on August 14th. Page five is a graph that illustrates the 10-year Treasury. This is what taxable municipal bonds are priced off of. We follow the 10-year Treasury on this, so you can see where rates have been going back to 1962. So overall, we're in a pretty low interest rate environment for this type of a transaction. Page six is suggested agenda language if the council so desires to proceed with this, and Mayor, council members, I am happy to try to answer any questions y'all may have about this.
So first I'll ask, open this up for anybody on the council. Have any questions? As you look at the process of how we've moved through this, Vince, do you see anywhere that we might have missed something or left something out? Basically, I want to say, what questions have we not asked that we should have as you're a professional in this industry, and we're just trying to make sure that we represent our citizens and constituents appropriately?
I think every I was dotted, T was crossed on this transaction. We had the election to approve the general obligation bonds. It was approved by the voters, so we conducted that election process. The city did that. We looked at trying to issue these tax-exempt versus taxable. Well, the nature of the Coliseum business is going to lend it to be a taxable transaction, so we did not want to get the city in trouble with the feds as far as claiming tax exemption when it would be a taxable issue. There might be matters arise from there. We looked at trying to get local participation with banks. We went down that road with the commercial banks. We basically crossed that bridge, got their interest rates. We compared that to the open marketplace. We found a lower interest rate in the open marketplace, but still were able to have local participation on the bond issue itself, thereby we secured the lower rate for the city. I think everything has been done on this, in my opinion, that could be in the best interest of the city.
So prior to sending you back out and getting your bid, we had a discussion of whether you should just do one bid or open it up to give you flexibility.
Right.
Would you say leaving it open to flexibility worked in favor of San Angelo?
In this case, I believe it did. Again, I want to go over, there's two types of sale methods. There's a competitive bid where we just throw the bond issue out in the marketplace, and underwriters bid the interest rate. It's a very transparent, above-table process. The other type of mechanism where you can sell bonds is the negotiated sale. This is the route that we chose. One of the primary reasons is that we wanted to have local participation on this, which we got. Also, this is a taxable municipal issue. That's a very unique issue. Typically, municipals are done in the tax-exempt arena. So this was done on a taxable basis, so it's a little off from your typical type of municipal bond. So that lent itself more to a negotiated-type transaction. All in all, I'm very happy with the rate that we got on this. I'm very happy with the ratings that we received from S&amp;P and Fitch, and I think this turned out to be a good transaction for the city.
Yes, we hope we made the right steps going down this progress. I mean, we banked a lot of our future on it, and with that, as things go forward, I'll look for a motion.
Do we need to read this that you suggested as language, Vince?
As presented, Tom. That's all you need.
Okay. So I have a first from Harry. Second. And a second from Tommy Hebert. Any public comment?
No.
With no public comment, we'll move for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With no nays, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Vince.
Thank you all very much.
Now we'll move to item B, consider authorizing, excuse me, a resolution establishing the Coliseum renovation project as an economic development program under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a Chapter 380 agreement with the Stock Show and Rodeo Association, setting out the development obligations under the program. Presentation by interim city attorney, Brandon Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. So directly related to the last item, this will establish the Coliseum renovation project as a program under Chapter 380 of the Local Government Code. What that does is allow us to work with the Stock Show and Rodeo, who will have an exclusive lease of the Coliseum, which, as you know, right now, they lease it during those event periods, but otherwise, the city operates, maintains it, does all the event hosting, but that will change under this arrangement. Some of the major terms of the Chapter 380 agreement, we'll be looking at, again, the exclusive long-term lease to the Stock Show. It will, of course, include rent to the city based on ticket sales and their day-to-day operation. They'll take that over and then share in maintenance of the facility. There is also a proposed capital investment to improve the fairgrounds and Coliseum area over a certain period of time. And then, of course, they prepared and paid for the designs of the renovation, so they'll work hand-in-hand with the city in overseeing the construction of that. And then, as you know, the bond issuance was only for a certain amount, so any cost overruns above that amount, SASRA would be responsible for that under this agreement. And I think that's all I have on it, unless you have any questions.
Cool. Open it up for questions, council.
Brandon, when you talk about the event side of it, that the Stock Show, they're going to manage that, does the city, can we still, can we still initiate events or anything in addition to what they have on their schedule?
So that can definitely be negotiated, and I've actually already started working on a provision for that. We'll probably need some input from our city manager and other directors, how many events we want to reserve, but yeah, that could absolutely be done.
And do you think that with that arrangement, that we will see an increased use, or they're going to do more events than what, say, we typically do?
I believe so. With the renovations that are being made, including the increased seating capacity, I think that's the whole idea, is that they'll be able to host other events other than Stock Show and Rodeo events.
And I might add to that. It's similar to what we've done with the auditorium. So the municipal auditorium used to, the city ran that. We contract now with the Performing Arts Coalition who run it. The city no longer does that. The thought process with that one, as with this one, is that they are more professionals in that field as far as bringing in events and marketing. The city really focuses on just having the venue there. We don't have people out there that are marketing it, so that's what the Stock Show is proposing to bring to the table with that as well. And with that one, the city did put some provisions in the agreement where, you know, to try and ensure, one, that local people still had the ability to use the building, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this side? Harry? Joe? Tommy? Oh, with all that said, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
I have a first from Tommy, and I think a second from Harry. Any public comment?
No.
With that said, we'll take a vote on item B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, item B, 7-0. We'll move into item C, discussion and possible direction of the issuance of 2025 tax notes to provide for a taxiway improvements at the airport. Presentation made by Finance Director Tina Dersky.
Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. This proposed short-term tax note is going to be using the fund balance in the debt service fund, and it will be issued for $1,062,000, and it is to fund the taxiway at the airport. In addition to the $1,062,000, there will be a pull from the airport's fund balance of $300,000 for a total of $1.3 million on this project. This part of the project, which Justin will present later on the agenda, is not able to be funded by FAA funds, is my understanding, and so that's why we're using this short-term note to get the project completed and ready to go build hangars out there, so.
Cool. Thank you, Tina. Any questions from council?
One.
Tommy?
How does this impact, if it does at all, capacity for other short-term debt issues, or does it impact it?
This does not impact capacity or the property tax rate, because we are pulling it out of the existing fund balance in the debt service fund.
All right, thanks.
With that, could I get a motion?
Motion.
Who was that from?
Me.
First from Karen.
Second.
Second from Mary. Any public comment?
No.
With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C passes 7-0. With that, we'll move on to item D, consider resolution approving the 2026 through 2030 capital improvement plan for the city of San Angelo. Tina Dersky.
Okay, so the capital improvement plan, we've sent this out to y'all. You've seen it, you're familiar with it. This is just kind of checking a box to make sure that we get it approved in accordance with the charter, and it would have been on consent, but Brandon made me put it on regular agenda, so. Had to get that in there.
Is it really the day to push it, Brandon? Of all people to push it, today, is it really the day? That's good. That shows initiative and conviction.
Yes.
Go, Brandon.
He's not afraid of me, apparently. That's all I have, unless y'all have any questions on that.
Maybe, Daniel, I'm going to flip this one. You call a little bit of an obolus. Could you explain the importance of the capital improvement plan and why we have it? Granted, there's lots of things on there, but things can't, maybe discuss how they move forward?
Absolutely. I know that as we move forward and we're looking at projects that we want to fund, we just had a workshop, the strategic planning workshop, and we kind of get a feel for what if council wants. Actually, you tell us what you want, and on our hand, as we move forward and look at projects for this coming year, you'll see projects perhaps that actually come out of the, I mean, the... that actually come out of the, I mean, the plan, the CIP itself. So we can't present to you all anything that's outside of the CIP. So the CIP plan is very important to us. A lot of people think that if it's on the CIP, it's going to be funded. Actually, what's in the CIP is hundreds of millions of dollars as far as the different projects. So we want to be very specific. We want to make sure that if we're going to fund something, it's on there, but it's something also that has been prioritized by city council members. So again, this is a tool. Back in 2007, the city council, there was a decision made and went into the charter that every year, this would be presented to the city council as well. And this is exactly what we're doing at this point, just to make sure that we get that done.
Well, it's, I think people, a clear way to understand is this is our menu, and if it's not on the menu, and if it's not in our pantry, we can't pick from of it to move forward with it.
It's a good way to look at it.
There's a lot of people look at a CIP plan and think, well, what do we do this? And it's been on there a long time. Well, so is the wastewater plant. There's hundreds of millions of dollars that are on this plan. Unfortunately, we're restricted by revenue. And with that is how they move forward. CIPs are very important, but I think people need to understand that it's a menu for us to move forward. It's placed on here. We'll go with that. So after all those, okay, Harry?
Just a real quick comment. So reminder to the citizens, there are a couple of items that were on the CIP plan for a number of years that were funded by private money. Splash Bads is one of them. The restroom over at MLK Park. So the way we move forward with some of these projects that have been on the CIP plan for a number of years may be that private-public partnership. So I just want to remind people out there that sometimes we'll be able to do things, but maybe it's an investment with the business and the citizens outside of the tax revenue.
Now, I definitely want to add to that as well. We're constantly looking for grants to apply for. And if a grant actually pops up that, and there may be a match from the city, but on our part, we want to leverage all the monies we possibly can. So if that grant's available, you may see one of these projects actually move up. It may not actually be an item that you prioritize for this coming year, but if those monies are available, we'll bring it to you and let you know, hey, we'd like to apply for this. We really feel we can leverage this, and we can get this project finally completed.
I think those great comments. Any further comments? With that, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. President.
First from Tommy, second from Harry. Missed it. Second from Harry. Any public comment? With none, I'll go for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7-0.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move to item E, consider approving a lease agreement renewal with U.S. Customs and Border Protection for the Air and Marine Operations Hangar and approving TIPS Agreement Number 2301 or 0402 with CC3 Construction in the amount of $996,223.60 for hangar shell improvements funded by the lease agreement and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation made by Airport Director Justin Fletcher.
Mayor Thompson, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
With that, we're going to recuse single-member District 2 Joe Sell. Justin, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, counsel. Bringing before you this morning a lease renewal between the U.S. Customs Border Protection and the airport. This lease renewal has a lot of moving parts, so I'll walk you through those. U.S. Customs has been operating month-to-month on a lease agreement for the past several years. The city's been maintaining our obligation, maintaining the facility, and U.S. Customs has been paying their lease revenue. The facility we're discussing is 8092 Hangar Road. You can kind of see Knickerbocker there on the north of, the north side of the hangar. This is a significant facility out of the airport. It's a significant size, 96,631 square feet of hangar and office space and 220,000 square feet of ramp space and vehicle parking space. This is a substantial facility for the airport. It's located in District 1, Mr. Tommy Hebert's district. So this lease is going to be executed under two different documents. The first one is a standstill agreement, and that's going to bring both parties under a formal agreement, agreement since we've been operating month-to-month for so long. Under the standstill agreement, we're going to have 180 days to carry out shell improvements in the hangar. We have four significant improvements we have to do. We have to install a new fire alarm, a modern fire alarm. The existing one is antiquated. We also have to install a fire suppression system that's compliant with NFPA fire codes. We have to identify all of the hangar electrical circuits. It's an aged hangar, so a lot of those electrical circuits aren't even identified. So we don't know what breakers we're flipping when we're in there working.
How old is that hangar?
I'm sorry?
How old is that hangar?
I think it goes back to the 60s, 60s, 70s.
So it's my age. Easy. It's not an old hangar. It's mid.
Infrastructure-wise. We also have to repair an underground conduit that was crushed. So that communication line is currently draped across the pavement there at the airport. We worked with CC3 Construction. They gave us a quote of $996,223 to make the shell improvements, to get that work conducted. So over 180 days, we installed the fire suppression. Once the city has accepted, once the government, U.S. Customs has accepted, we will then execute the on-airport lease agreement. That's a 10-year lease agreement with two five-year terms, so 20 years total. And this kind of walks you through their lease rate, how their lease rates will increase over the two agreements. And finally, once the on-airport agreement is reached, it'll be an annual revenue of $368,000 to the airport annually. Can I answer any questions? So the city will front the cost of the fire suppression. I should have addressed that. The city will front the cost of the fire suppression, and then the airport will then reimburse the city over the course of the lease agreement of the $996,000.
Questions about counsel? Tommy?
Just a comment. It's been a long time coming, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thanks for your continued work and bringing it forward, Justin. Appreciate you. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on this side? So Justin, I've got a couple of questions here. Number one, should something, should we hit something that creates a little hiccup or headwind? Can you extend the 180 days?
Yes, sir.
Just for protection of both parties?
Yes, sir. Talking to lease agreement, leasing with the government, they will be very supportive of us. As long as we're operating above board, we're doing our due diligence to progress forward with the project, they'll work with us on the 180 days.
All right. Second question, if there's something in there that one party or the other finds is, I would say unfair, or over the period of the lease, we look at it and say, you know what, that has been an exceptional cost or benefit, and it's a little bit unfair. When you go back and renew this lease, can you address those options at the renewal point?
We could negotiate. We could work with our legal and negotiate those terms.
Right. Because I mean, you never know what's going to come up. And from sitting in on a couple airport, and your airport board has done a wonderful job of helping you work through this and providing feedback. But should there be some things that pop up we aren't aware of, and maybe changes with things that we're going to do because of the future tax way we're going to talk about here in a little bit? I just want to make sure there's a little bit of a step back there that we can go and maybe renegotiate or re-talk, if it's for the benefit of both parties.
Yes, sir.
Cool. With that, I have no further questions. Anybody else? With that, I'll look for a motion?
So move.
First by Harry. Second by Mary Coffey. Heather, is there any public comment? With that, I'll look to take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Fletcher. Somebody, let me run to Joe. Joe? Good catch. All right, we'll go ahead and move forward into item F, consider awarding AP 01-25 Construction South Hangar Access Taxi Lane at the San Angelo Regional Airport to Hoare Construction in the amount of 4.458, $585.17 FAA AIP Number 3-48-0191-051-2025, utilizing 300,000 of airport fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Presentation made by Airport Director Justin Fletcher. Welcome back.
Yes, sir. So another project that's been in the works for a while. We've.
So how long's a while?
2020, five years. This project has been bid and rebid six times. This has been our sixth, sixth formal rebid process on this project. A lot of ups and downs with this project. So a little background, this is, one of the common requests we get at the airport is, can I build a hangar? Do you have any T-hanger availability? And the construction of this taxiway is really going to help us start to address those concerns by airport users. This project, like I said, it's had a bid and rebid. There's been a lot of, a lot of conversation regarding the spec, the FAA spec of the asphalt being too stringent, too strict. So we took this back to the FAA. The FAA issued us a mod, a modification, which allows us to pay text dot asphalt mix. So that's a benefit to local contractors, and I think that really helped us get bids in on this go-around. We worked with Hoare Construction. They came in as the low bid of $4.4 million for the project. As Tina mentioned earlier, this project was bid out in three schedules. The first schedule was the base taxiway width of 35 feet. That's what the FAA will fund. That's the minimum design standard for a Group 2 aircraft, which is corporate jet and lower. So the schedule two was the additional 75-foot pavement width, and that portion has to be funded locally. It's not eligible for federal funds. So that's why we approached the city seeking additional support for this initiative to get, to get the taxiway constructed. The additional 75-foot width pavement does provide some benefits. It keeps, it keeps our pavement width over to our taxiway object-free area, which is our TOFA, which keeps wingtips and engines over pavement. That's a huge benefit. There's a huge margin of safety there. Additionally, it expands our project limits. So now we're going to go through, in one project, we're going to address all the drainage. We're going to address all the site work. So when we're finished, when we've accepted the project, we'll have shovel-ready green space parcels ready for development. So it's definitely a benefit to have the additional 75-foot hang, 75-foot pavement width. So during the bid, Hoare Construction, they committed, they came in with a low bid of $4.4 million. And we're going to fund this project through AIP 51, which is going to be eligible for FAA funding. We're going to utilize 300,000 of airport funds from our fund balance, and the city has committed $1.1 million for the local match. And I'll show you this, this illustration. Everything in red is eligible for funding through the FAA for federal funding, and everything in blue is what is going to be funded locally. And you can see, we do have room for hangars. There's total 16 box hangars and two rows of T-hangers. So if this is built out, we could essentially accommodate 32 aircraft, at a minimum 32 aircraft, depending on their size and the capacities of the hangar. So this is a significant benefit for the airport. Can I answer any questions?
So number one, we've spent a long time getting here to this point. We've all got a passion to see the airport grow. But I think it's important to realize, even with these hangars, there's four, not four hundred-by-hundreds, four ninety-by-nineties, four sixty-by-sixties, plus the adjacent T-hangers. There are projects that come up for discussion all the time. I mean, military is looking at, you know, looking for refurbation, places to refurb separate types of aircraft. So that might take something for another side of the airport and be able to move those here. During the initial storm recovery on July 4th, we met with Texas DPS. How many, how many, I was fixing to say aircraft do they have here?
I know we've got the one operating right now.
One, and they have potentially four.
Yes.
That they would like to bring. Discussions with Mike Boyd a couple weeks ago. There's some other military operations that, should we do this, we would become a candidate to bring in a lot more economic impact. And then it's more than just a hangar rental. And I think people need to understand the picture of this is longer than just concrete. But having this in place allows us to bring in aircraft that insurance wouldn't cover if they were not covering, you know, specifically taxing over, I was fixing to say, a covered area. It allows you to take all your drainage. And also, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is Hoare Construction using local subs on all this, a lot of this?
I know they are using some local subs, yes.
Okay. So that's important to us. We'd like to see those dollars spent here. And if you can work with them as a project development to pursue as much of that local as they can, we would appreciate that, Fletcher.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Justin, what is the, and I know they aren't all the same rate, but the typical rate rental fee for that hangar?
So we would start with a land lease. I think it depends on the development philosophy that the city chooses to pursue. So a lot of the times, these third-party developers, they'll come and approach us, and we have the land. That's our asset. We have the land that's available for lease. So we would, we would offer them a land lease. Well, that current land lease rate is 12 cents a square foot, and these hangars are typically 10,000 square feet, the hundred-by-hundreds. So I think the argument could be made, with the investment the city's making, with the investment the airport's making, we need a more competitive land lease rate. So I think we need to have that conversation with our airport advisory board, bring that back to counsel for review. Because of the investment, we want to make sure that the airport's being competitive, we're being fair and reasonable to our users, but we're also making the airport more sustainable long-term.
Right.
I get your question answered, Mayor.
Sorry, I'm just staring at you.
Justin, walk through how a hangar would be built and what financial entities, who participates?
So these could be any third-party developers. They could, these could be an FBO. These could be a private owner. They would approach us. We would just request a letter of intent. They would tell us what size aircraft, what size hangar they're interested in building. We would work with our consultants. We want to make sure that the design is going to be compatible with what we have down there on our south taxi lane. And then the airport would work with the design and construction company to come in and construct the facility, making sure they have access to the airport. We have to work with the FAA on airspace analysis. There's 7460s that have to be done for airspace approval. All our buildings have to be approved by the FAA before they can be constructed. So there's definitely a timeline we have to follow and a list of things that have to be looked at before they can even break around.
Do you have a list of people that might be interested?
We have a waitlist of 12 for the actual box hangars, and we have a waitlist of 29 individuals for T-hangers. So we've got a significant roster of individuals that are interested in hangar space out at the airport.
Awesome. Any other questions by counsel? With that, I'll look for a motion?
So move.
First by Tommy, second by Harry. Any public comment? With that, we'll look for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item F passes 7-0. Fletcher, it's been kind of like your birthday today now, hasn't it?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're going to put the heat on now, okay? Now you've got it. You thought you had the heat. It's coming now. All right, we'll move to item G, consider authorizing staff to develop and issue requests, qualifications, RFQ for the re-envisioning of the Concho River Parks and Santa Fe Park to seek professional services to create landscape plans that incorporate the Concho River Legacy Trail Sculpture Installations. Presentation made by Parks and Rec Director Carl Wyatt.
Yes, this is a revisit of an item we brought to counsel on May 6. We're bringing it back for a couple of main reasons. One, there's new council members. We want to make sure everybody's on board with the direction that we're taking. And that's the second reason. We want to make sure everybody's on board. So on May 6, counsel adopted a resolution that authorized the private fundraising for a project called the Concho River Legacy Trail. So when you hear that, that's what this project is. It's basically a very ambitious sculpture project, the value of which could approach $30 million, and includes up to 110, 120 sculptures in maybe a dozen or 15 separate vignettes that tell a story about the area, prehistory and settlement history, up to a certain point, maybe in the 1920s. It doesn't include sculptures of any individuals, any individual San Angelos. It's really just telling a story. The group has already started working on what those vignettes could be as part of the story, and have already started reaching out to sculptors to see if they're interested in doing some of the work. Part of that resolution that was passed at the May 6 meeting was to direct staff to work on putting out a request for, at that time, request for proposals to hire a firm to work with us to incorporate those sculptures into the river parks. Because of state procurement law, we really are looking for a request for qualifications because we want to hire a landscape architecture firm. So bottom lines, we're seeking the approval of the scope of this RFQ request for qualifications before we issue it. And just looking at the entire scope of this map, we've separated things into zones. Zone A, over here, it's almost entirely Santa Fe Park from the north, northern tip, crossing the Central High School, all the way around the river, and into Randolph Street. Here is the YMCA. Zone A also includes this piece over here, part of property we call Park Heights. It's just below the scout buildings. And that area, primarily, again, Santa Fe Park, is the main area for the sculpture, for the setting of the vignettes of the sculpture project. for the setting of the vignettes of the sculpture project. So includes placement on those properties and on Santa Fe Park property. And I'll go into the different zones, but you see the different zones, from Zone B at Civic League Park, where the Water League Collection is, Zone C, down here, which is Sunken Garden Park, where the Sculpture Garden is, the Visitor Center is here, and then Zone D wraps around all the way to, basically across from the Convention Center, where the memorials are to be located, the World War II Memorial. Closer look at Zone B, again, where the Water League Collection is, this is our unofficial Botanical Gardens. And there has been talk about making it an official Botanical Garden at this location. Don't know what that could be, we want to talk about what the possibilities are. But a key thing we want to point out is the possible integration with Santa Fe Park and crossing over and connecting to that, and might it actually include development into Santa Fe Park as part of an official Botanical Garden? Zone C, we already have plans for development of this property, to improve it in terms of accessibility and parking, lighting, setting of the sculptures, but how do we better integrate that, this park with the Visitor Center and with Santa Fe Park? We want that to be part of this master plan. And then Zone D, which is the big one, already has a lot of development on its own. Of course, I mean, with the river stage here, it has its own plans, but how do we better integrate and connect that through this entire zone, river park zone? Bartowett Park with the Lady in Blue sculptures, Firefighters in Royal City Park, we have different gardens all along the way into our memorials. The scope of this request for qualifications is including all those park properties, focusing on where the sculpture collection will be, and then all those river parks. How do we connect everything together? Looking forward 20 years, what do we want to see developed in those park properties? And of course, we've got to be cautious, not to overdevelop park properties, you don't want to develop them too much. But a very key part of this process with a request for qualifications is the community engagement. We've got to make sure everybody's on board. We've already had some discussions with the Santa Fe Park Commission about what to do with Santa Fe Park, and this will help continue that process. Does Santa Fe Park stay a golf course? Does it, as we incorporate this sculpture collection, do we have a six-hole Par III golf course on the north side, and then make the rest of it a park? How do we incorporate the Botanical Gardens if we do? We need to have those discussions. We also need to include the San Diego Homeowners Association, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Public Art Commission, San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, the School District, downtown San Angelo, the Area Foundations, city leaders, and more. So, the final thing is, we want conceptual plans for all of this area, we want incorporating the sculpture project, and then we also want landscape plans, we have to have landscape plans to incorporate the sculpture vignettes on the park properties. How do you connect to it? What site work is needed, any topographical work? What lighting might there be? Irrigation for the areas around it, we've got to make sure it looks nice, we can't just put the sculptures on the ground. And then just a general maintenance plan. That's it, we're looking for approval to move forward with the solicitation, the request for qualifications, we bring that back, hopefully in a few months, we'll bring back a planning, a funding plan for that. We'll have a discussion with the development corporations, some of their funds could be used to help pay for this, as well as any departmental expense budget savings from the year. But we'll bring that, when we bring back the request to award it, we'll bring back the funding possibilities.
So to be clear here, Carl, you're just looking for approval to go out with an RFQ?
Yes, sir. And normally, we don't have to do that, but because the council changed and we want to make, be above board.
It's a very wise move, with all the people you have listed on there, to at least go out and reach out to all those people in an advisory capacity to seek input. That's a very wise move on our part. This is not any changes that are immediate or pending, but this is a good first step for a master plan, because this is going to carry on for years. I mean, it's not only going to obligate this council, it will obligate probably several councils past us, as far as things that are going to come in, they're going to have to look at and review as these things are placed. With that, I'll open it up for any questions from council? Tommy, or Harry?
Just a real quick comment. Since the majority of this particular area happens to be in District III, I'm going to say this is something that the mayor just said, this will be on for generations. Once we complete everything down there, this will bring people in from all over the world. So, I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with this.
I'm going to hold, I will give that to you, but I'm going to hold it for an hour, and see if there's any further questions first, before we start with the motions. Tommy?
Timeline, Carl, and I know you can't be real predictive of a timeline, but in general, you said a couple of months to go through the RFQ process, and then, once they get started, what kind of timeline would you foresee?
Generally, up to a year. I mean, definitely something I want to get finished before I retire. But yes, it'll take two, three months before we bring back something to council to consider awarding, and then, once we get the contract for that and get it implemented, it's going to take about a year.
And it'll probably be more like three months before we bring it back. By the time we send it out to all the groups, give them a few weeks to return it, get a group together to review those, that isn't going to happen quickly.
Rick, do you have a summary or some things you'd like to say about how you see this thing moving forward?
No, it's just, I think Carl's covered it well, and as the, the thing that really hits home on this one is, you had a group that came to you last time, for those who might have not seen it, who presented this as sort of a grassroots San Angelo movement, they weren't asking for city money to build these sculptures and tell this story, that's a $30 million potential investment of private funds, not from the city of, I mean, not from this group. And so, this is sort of their ask, is to, you know, help move this project along and make it cohesive for the future and how it all ties together. This is the basis that we need to do on the groundwork on our end, while they work on funding the rest of it.
Awesome, thank you, Rick.
One question, thank you. Carl, I know you said that you'd be bringing back your funding request or sources, do you have an estimate, and I'm not trying to hold you to it, but what, you know, it's like when we redo something or get into something, no matter how glorious a project it is, it always runs over budget, or it does with me. Do you have, like, a percentage or ratio of public and private, I mean, public being the city money and then the private donors? Do you have kind of a basic, I don't know how to say that, just a, like a percentage, is it going to be half and half, or 100%, but what's going to be the city's monetary investment with this?
Well, initially, it would be with the master plan. So, but in terms of incorporating the sculptures into the parks, that's going to be part of that project, it's not city funds. So, at this point, it really is only city funds for the master plan.
And maybe I didn't explain.
What direction it gives, it could provide, one of the things we've got to do is redevelop the playground.
Right.
Kids Kingdom is a playground at Santa Fe Park, but that's one thing that we need to move forward with here in the near future, but the master plan could give direction on some future projects, but in and of itself isn't a new expense. There is an expense for the master plan.
Yeah, so at this time, the only thing, this particular project for the master plan would be totally funded by the city. The construction that was proposed at a prior meeting for all these sculptures would be totally constructed by outside sources, is what they were proposing.
Right.
Win-win.
And that part is just the site work, any electrical work, any walkways, electrical irrigation, that part is incorporating those sculptures into the landscape, that's private funding.
And as you go along, I suspect, because y'all said, this is going to be, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight, the build-out of these will be many, many years. So you may see places where they come and say, we're doing landscaping, it's in a park, the city has a system, council, are you willing to help put in the irrigation system around it, where our Parks crews step in and do that? I think you'll see that kind of stuff as it comes along, but they weren't asking for major dollars upfront on something.
Win-win. Thank you.
Patrick?
Is any of the, so I know the, I've seen the sculpture plan, and that was all probably funded, is any of that, because you kind of alluded to it, is any of that based on us doing this? Like, if we don't do this, they're going to say, no, we're not going to do that now? Or are they going for regardless?
No, they're raising the funds to do the sculptures and incorporate them into the landscape, but we have to come up with the plans of how to integrate that into our parks.
And one of our major suggestions with this is that you've seen a lot of that start kind of already, we have a group that wants to do the World War II Memorial over here, you've got the Lady in Blue, you've got the sheep, you've got various things, and as this project is trying to tell that overall story of the development of San Angelo and our history, we don't want that to happen haphazardly, thrown all over the place, because then it just doesn't work. And as Harry alluded to, I think this is going to be, once it's done, a $30 million in bronzes is going to be a pretty big draw for San Angelo, so we want it done right, and that's our reasoning for this. We had a group that met, oh, this winter, to do some visioning of this whole area, just a local group, and it was kind of neat to see all the ideas. So our thought is to bring that information that that group put together and sort of give it, you know, to this group as a jumpstart, and you'll see some other areas that we may come to you later that don't revolve consultant, but, you know, this area is kind of your core area that revolves around a lot of cultural things, those type of things. As you move to the sports complex, group saw it as more of an area that is more sports-oriented, so you may have more kayak launches, you know, those kind of things that are, and so you develop the river in different categories of what's unique in those areas, and this is kind of that first step.
And just right quick, to touch on the importance of this project, some of the names of the sculptures they're getting are phenomenal. I don't want to get too excited about this, but one is...
It looks like you're getting excited.
I'm getting excited.
You're making a call up here.
One of the sculptures is the one who did the World War I Memorial, that's just right next to the White House, I saw it just a couple of weeks ago, and it's amazing. I hope to see it.
We hope you do, too. Patrick, did you get your question answered? At this point, I believe I have a first from Harry Thomas, can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Karen Hesse Smith. Any public comment, Heather? With no public comment, we'll take a vote on item G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Congratulations, Carl, it's a big step. We'll move to item H, first reading and public hearing for ordinance 4-1 CP 25-01, a request to amend the comprehensive plan from neighborhood to commercial in the Lascar addition, block 38, lot 6. And item two, you want to do both these together, Aaron?
Yes, sir, please.
And item two, Z 2518, a request to rezone from single-family residential zoning district to the general commercial zoning district located at 21 East 21st Street, being the Lascar addition, block 38, lots 4 through 6. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Director of Planning and Development Services, Aaron Vanoy, this morning, to look at this property here, just off of Chadburn and 21st Street, most of y'all know, right here, the popular restaurant, Western Sky, they have some properties that they own back here, that they would like to look at some future development. And, so this is 0.48 acres, it's a request to rezone from the single-family residential to the general commercial, it is in District 4, Mr. Patrick Keely, and it's in the Reagan neighborhood. So you can see here on this map, there's one property there that has a structure on it, they are proposing to remove that structure or modify that structure to make it more usable. Currently, right now, they have kind of a parking area, they're going to continue to utilize that area as a parking area with future development, hopefully, coming in the next few years. So you can see how the lots are laid out, based on the plat from many, many years ago. Again, this lot right here originally was residential, and then, these lots over time, the residences have been removed over times, and now has been acquired with some commercial entities that are going forward. You can see our notification map that was sent out, we did have one in opposition, they were just opposed to mostly the overall parking situation, their goal as Western Sky is to actually help improve that over time, and so, as a land use, it was not really in opposition to the land use itself. It is compatible with the surrounding land uses and will support continued growth of a locally established business, it will allow the restaurant to offer more parking, and will remove or modify the dangerous building that's there on the dangerous building list, and will meet the general development pattern along the Chadburn corridor. We know that on the Chadburn corridor, those businesses, some of them are constricted by space, some of them are continuing to develop and continue to grow, and we believe this is a minor, what we would call a minor encroachment into the neighborhood, there are still protections for these residences through here, where they'll be, over time, they'll be placing a fence there that will kind of help provide a separation between the commercial and the residential. It's also going to general commercial, which allows only up to 20% outdoor storage, as opposed to a heavy commercial, which is unlimited outdoor storage. This being a restaurant business, they don't have a lot of outdoor storage, it's mostly parking, and trying to get enough parking spaces so it's safer that, when people are trying to enter on Chadburn, enter off of 21st onto Chadburn, that they have a good circulation pattern through there. So with that, city staff is recommending approval of this zone change from the neighborhood to general commercial, from, let me read that again, so let me go back here real quickly, because I'm not sure these slides got all corrected. So, the comprehensive plan stops right there, this is where it talks about this being neighborhood and this being commercial. So, this lot, right here, is changing the comprehensive plan, the underlying comprehensive plan, from a neighborhood to a commercial, and then, all three lots are being rezoned to general commercial. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to city council, as well as to the public out there. So when we make our recommendation here, and we're talking about a comprehensive plan update to rezone from the neighborhood to the general commercial, it's on that one single lot, which I believe is lot number 6, and then, rezone the single-family residential for the property located, or properties, 21 East 21st Street, which is lots 4 through 6 in the Lascar addition. Planning Commission did hear this at their June meeting, and did have a recommended approval vote of 6-0. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Aaron, I think the first step here is we've, I've spoken to the property owner, and for years, we've asked, we've all joked around and kidded when they were going to clean up the rest of, I think this is a great first step to make this much more compatible with, you know, number one, the use of the facility, and number two, the neighborhood. I think getting rid of this unsightly building cleans that whole thing up a lot, and I'm glad to see this finally come forward, I know it's been discussed for several years, and I think we're to the point that everybody's with that. With that, I'll open that up to any questions. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on it, I'm kind of with Tom, that old house is complete eyesore, and they've done a great job of making Western Sky look a lot better, and my understanding is her plans is to get rid of that just as soon as she's able to. So I'm all for it. I've talked to her, I did not get a chance to talk to the, I wanted to find out the opposition, but then we had a little flood come around and got a little busy, and didn't get a chance to go talk to them. But I think it'll just, it'll help the neighborhood, it'll help the restaurant, it'll help the business, it'll help all the people coming to that side of town, trying to eat there, have better parking, and get rid of the rocks and gravel, and her plans, from what I've talked to her, her plans are to eventually just make that a nice paved parking spot to help out that area, so I'm all for it.
If you'd like to make that a motion?
I move to approve.
I got a first from Patrick, looking for a second. Second from, I think it was Karen, Karen Hesse Smith. Any public comment? With no public comment, we'll look for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items H 1 and 2 carries 7-0. With that, we'll move into item I. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend PD 0502, a request to amend a plan development by updating the concept site plan to include renovations and expansions located at 50 East 43rd Street. Presentation made by Aaron Vanoy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, again, Director of Planning and Development Services, Aaron Vanoy. This is for the Fairgrounds and Coliseum, this is just the major site plan or the concept plan amendment to the original PD, it has not changed any... It does not change any of the language within the original PD that allows all the uses. So there's not a real land use change here, but our ordinance says a major concept plan or site plan change does need to come through Planning Commission and City Council. So this is just a PD amendment on this 91 acres, almost 92 acres up here. It is in District 2, Mr. Joe Self, and it is in the Lakeview neighborhood. So you can see the future land use and zoning maps. Again, it's campus and institutional, which also includes the school district and the areas there, but this area just happens to have a planned development. You see the stadium down here also has the same planned development. This is not changing anything for that, as that's actually owned by the school district at this time. We're only modifying the 91 acres here for the concept plan. Here's the concept plan, kind of an insert. You can see the original, if you kind of see these points right here, here's the original structure right there, and so they're expanding that, almost doubling it, making some major improvements, as we heard today through the election and everything, that for the bonds. This is the actual legalizing of allowing the land use there, which the PD did in 2005, and this is just saying, all right, we believe in this concept plan is appropriate to move forward as an amendment. The expansion of the Coliseum is classified as a major site plan amendment. The proposed expansion does not impact the land use in any significant way, only as more indoor seating and accommodations for exhibitors, entertainers, and contestants within the Coliseum. The scale of the project compared to the land dedicated is minimal and will continue to house a significant heritage and cultural significance for the fairgrounds and the community. With that rationale, the city staff does recommend approval of this major site plan amendment to PD 0502, and the Planning Commission also heard this at their June meeting and recommend approval with, say, 6-0 vote as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Erin, I think it's a great, once again, we'll say it's a great step moving forward with the Coliseum renovation. It's, and I want to say, had that renovation been completed years ago, a lot of things that have happened as far as recovery and disaster over what we've done would have opened this facility up for that use to some degree. Anyway, with that said, I'll open it up for any questions? Joe, do you have any questions or a statement?
I don't. I actually saw this before Planning Commission, before I was off that.
So you've seen it twice. Now you're bragging. Okay, with that. So why don't you make it a motion for the good old SMD, too?
I'm also moved to approve.
Okay, I've got a first from Joe Self and a second from Patrick Keely. Heather, any public comment? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. With that, we're going to move into item seven, closed session, executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings. Chapter D, Exceptions to Requirements That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. Item A will be Section 551.O74, Personal Matters to Deliberate the Appointment of the City Attorney. With that, we'll go into closed session for, I would say, probably 30 minutes, and we'll be back. All right, it's 10:15. We're going to continue with item eight, Follow-Up and Administrative Issues. We'll go to item A. Consider items discussed in executive session. We'll flip that one over to you, Daniel Valenzuela.
First of all, I'd like to thank Brendan Dyson. He's been doing the job of the interim city attorney for the past six months, actually over six months at this point. I know that the progression I've seen has been great, and Brendan's been doing a great job, and at this point, it is my honor to announce my appointment as our next city attorney, and that's Mr. Brendan Dyson. Congratulations, Brendan.
Speech?
Speech.
Speech?
Well, I'm humbled and appreciative of Mr. Valenzuela's trust in me and the council's trust in me. It's been a pleasure serving this community, and I look forward to continuing that for a long time, so, thank you.
Well, so, it wasn't given to you. You earned it. Be appreciative of that, and we're appreciative of you. Thank you very much, Brendan.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, just to qualify, we don't vote up there, all right? It was a good one. Heather, do we have anything under item B? Various board nominations or anything we need to hit?
Just one for the Park Commission, James Robinson.
James Robinson, at large, to an unexpired term ending January 2027. Move for approval on item 8, item B. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, I've got a first from Tommy. I've got a second from Karen. Is there any public comment on James?
None.
With that, we'll take a vote for him for item B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll move to item C, is announcements and considerations for future agenda items. Anybody have anything they want to cover? With that, silence is golden. We'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Move to adjourn by Tommy, second by Harry Thomas. Thank y'all. 117.